Good morning, everyone. We will now begin the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Supervisor Shucklin, followed by a moment of silence.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take up the first item on today's agenda. This is Board of Supervisors matters, and we will start with Supervisor Shucklin.
We will. You saw that I was looking at my calendar here to see what I did last week. Well, I'll tell you what I'm doing this week. Tonight, tonight I will be attending the Viselius Seroptimus Ruby Awards. It's a yearly awards that they give out to community members who have an impact on young women in our community, so that's always a great event. I have a mental health board meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow, I will be attending the groundbreaking Viselia Industrial Park for a new distribution center, Merck, which they are a distributor. Well, Merck, everybody probably knows, has heard of. They're a pharmaceutical company, but they also have supplies, lab supplies and whatnot, and they will be locating here in Viselia. Next Tuesday, we all know is the Ag Expo, so we will not be meeting. And then the Thursday after that, Valentine's Day, I will be spending in Sacramento at a CSAC Board of Directors meeting. So, yeah, that'll be nice. I'm gonna win a lot of points for that. So, thank you. That's it.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, it was kinda comical. I walked in, pulled up this morning, and there's Steve Worthley still lingering around these board chambers. It's like, dude, you're retired. You can't do anything.
All security.
Just, you know, go. It was good seeing him this morning. There's a retirement board meeting this Wednesday at 8:30 at the Tassera Building. There's a LAFCO meeting this Wednesday at 2 o'clock, right here in these board chambers, and look forward to welcoming our new LAFCO representative for the county, Dennis Townsend, and then Supervisor Valero's the alternate as well. And then on Sunday, actually, I believe it's at 3:30 in the afternoon, the Sheriff's Department will be having the unveiling of Deputy Scott Ballantyne and James Chavez Memorial Highway. That is exactly three years following the plane accident that killed both Deputy Ballantyne and pilot James Chavez. So, I really applaud the Sheriff's Department for dedicating that memorial, and I hope that it's a very successful event. Again, we have to remember the risks that our men and women take each and every day. On Monday, next Monday, will be the Greater Cuiya Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting at 1 o'clock in Farmersville. The World Ag Expo will be next week. Like Supervisor Shucklin mentioned, it's a tremendous and hugely impactful event in and around Tulare County and the San Joaquin Valley, and really applaud all the volunteers and everyone that works hard all year to make this thing possible. It's a heck of a show and brings a lot to our county. The Retirement Board Investment Committee will be meeting on February 20th at 2 o'clock. Next Friday, there will be an SJVIA meeting, San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, meeting at 9 o'clock in Fresno. Just a reminder for those of my colleagues who are on the SJVIA, that meeting exists, unless Rhonda tells us it's canceled. Okay, it's not canceled. And on the 25th of February, which is two Mondays, or not next Monday, but the following Monday, TCAG will be right here in these board chambers and conference rooms back there. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Good. Supervisor Valero.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Last week, I attended the TCAG 101 Workshop. It was very informative, and I enjoyed learning about the structures and processes of the agency. And so TCAG is truly creating regional plans and building regional projects that impact our great Central Valley, and I'm glad to be a part of that. Tonight, I too will be attending the Seroptimus Club Awards Night with my colleagues, and I'm excited that Myra Bersera will be receiving an award this evening. She continues to work tirelessly to uplift the community of Ivanhoe, along with her involvement in education and community service. Tomorrow, Jason will be introducing me to the department heads at his regular meeting, and I know that Dennis will be attending that as well. So I'm looking forward to connecting with them, and thank you, Jason, for the opportunity. I will also be attending the Dinuba Open Gate Annual Luncheon Fundraiser tomorrow afternoon. Open Gate, a homeless shelter for women and children and a food distribution center, has been going through some hardships and a lot of changes recently with the potential loss of its food distribution in Cutler, Arosi. So it is definitely a void that needs to be filled, especially during these times. I'll also be heading over to the elections on Thursday morning to view the new technology and upgrades that the department will be receiving. And that afternoon, I'll participate in the Tulare Kings Building Industry Association annual meeting. And then that evening, I will be at Bitwise Industries in Fresno, where I will be recognized along with 25 other recipients at an art installation entitled Unmasked Heroes. And then on Friday, I will be volunteering at a Night to Shine sponsored by the Tim Tebow Foundation. So this evening event provides a memorable prom night for persons with special needs, and it will take place at Viselia first. And then lastly, on Saturday, I will be attending a half-day workshop on groundwater sustainability at Fresno State. And then on Sunday, I too will attend the Ballantyne and Chavez Memorial Highway unveiling ceremony. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Wednesday, Chairman Crocker and I took our lives in our own hands and went with former Supervisor Ennis down to Delano as he was driving. We got there and back intact, so we're thankful for that.
In three minutes.
And we visited. We all attended the Slav Luncheon and had some wonderful lamb that day. Friday, went to the Porterville College Hall of Fame at Porterville College in the gymnasium and had a great dinner out there, and they recognized outstanding employee Lou Marchand, and in athletics, Coach Vicki Dugan, and a distinguished alumni and Veterans Center, sort of the inspiration for the Veterans Center there, Steve Schultz. They were all honored that evening, so that was a lot of fun. Yesterday, I had the honor of going up to the Tulie River Tribal Council for their swearing-in ceremony for a couple of new members that they have on their nine council member board, and enjoyed lunch with them afterwards. And then kinda rushed right on over to Burton for Burton Arts Now, meeting of the leadership team that I'm on. And that's what that's trying to do is promote arts in education, and so I've been involved with that board as they try to get that off the ground. Tonight, I'm gonna run by the Porterville City Council meeting, a couple of things on the agenda that I'm interested in, but I'm also just going to, just sort of the first time as a supervisor, go and just extend the hand of friendship and cooperation and tell them, looking forward to working together. So that's this evening. As Supervisor Valero mentioned, we're going to be meeting on Wednesday with some of the department heads. Again, Jason, appreciate the opportunity, the invitation to do that. Been very impressed with everyone we've met so far and how easy everyone is to work with, how responsive they are to our questions as we learn and get involved in these positions. And then Wednesday, the first LAFCO meeting that I will be attending. Thursday, Kings Tulare Building Industry Association Dinner, and Victor Davis, or lunch, I should say, Victor Davis Hansen will be the keynote speaker, so looking forward to that. And Thursday, I've been to a lot of the East Tulie GSA meetings, but Thursday will be the first one where I'll be sitting on this side of the dais. So that's been a huge learning curve on that one. And then I have a meeting scheduled for Friday with Porterville City Manager and some of the council members, just to, again, begin that conversation on how we can work together as we move forward. Sunday, sounds like we're gonna be well represented up in my district, up by Springville, for the Ballantyne and Chavez Memorial Highway dedication, so we're looking forward to that. We may be doing it under some pop-up tents, potentially, if that continues. And then there's, following Monday, a Southern California Gas Customer Appreciation Dinner here in Viselia at the Convention Center. Of course, the World Ag Expo, which we'll all be attending. And then Friday, the 15th, I'll be helping to give a welcome for the Employment Development Department in Porterville, the Migrant and Seasonal Farm Workers Appreciation Day. And so I'll just give a brief welcome there and probably join them for a little bit of snacks afterwards. So, that's what we have going. Thank you.
Very good. I've got quite a bit of events and items over the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, the President of RCRC, Greg Norton, will be in town meeting, and so if there's any department heads that wanna swing by, I believe he's gonna be here around 2, 1 o'clock, somewhere in the afternoon hour. And so I'm sure he'd love to see anyone. If you wanna bend his ear on advocacy efforts or something, then we'll be here in the office. Thursday, as Supervisor Townsend mentioned, the BIAs having their annual lunch. Friday, the San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority is meeting in Fresno. That's the meeting on Temperance Flat. We're still finalizing the transfer over to the Investors Group, and so we're hoping to have that finalized this week and probably reducing our scope and meeting schedule quite a bit after that moves forward. Farm Show is mentioned. I love it. It's gonna be a great time, so I'm looking forward to some supporting Sundale and all the other great organizations that have great food out there, as well as just looking at all the toys that I wish I could have. On the 17th, Sunday, the 17th, the Viselia American Legion is celebrating their 100th anniversary, so I plan on attending that. And I was gonna check with Supervisor Shucklin if she was interested and available to do something along that, those lines. On the 20th, RCRC, we're having an Executive Committee meeting. That's part of why the President's coming down. He wants to prep me and make sure I don't screw up the first Executive Committee meeting that I serve on. The 21st is our San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board meeting. 22nd, SJVIA, as was mentioned. 23rd, Exeter Chambers having their annual awards lunch, or dinner, excuse me. It's a Saturday evening, and recognizing man, woman of the year, businesses of the year, so it's always a nice night. And then the 25th, as mentioned, is TCAG. I do wanna make a point on something that happened last week, last Friday, as the Vice Chair of the Public Lands Subcommittee on Payments for NACO, we met with Senator Murkowski's staff. And Senator Murkowski is the Chair of the Senate Natural Resources Committee and, from Alaska. And there was a lot of discussion regarding PILT payments, and there's a cap on small counties and how much they can receive. PILT is payment in lieu of taxes, so federal lands that historically were private lands and now are federal lands no longer generate a property tax, and so the federal government helps provide that gap that is now missing because it's a federal land. And so there's a cap, but there was a lot of discussion, I think they forgot that I was on the call, but there was a lot of discussion about, you know, there's all these large counties that receive dollars and they have, you know, millions of people or hundreds of thousands of people in it, and so these folks from Wyoming and Alaska and Oregon and Idaho and Utah were, you know, other county commissioners and boards of supervisors from these other counties were talking about how there needs to be an adjustment, and if you take away a few dollars from them, then it's really not gonna impact them because they have such huge budgets. And they specifically were actually targeted Clark County in Nevada, which is where Las Vegas lies, because they receive a large amount of, they have a lot of public lands, even though there is a large city there, there's a lot of public lands around it. And they also targeted Kern County. Well, I piped in, and I said, "Well, we've got $3.5 million in PILT payments, and we've got, you know, 4,800 square miles, and, you know, we're almost half a million, but we need it just as much." And so, you know, the point was, we refocused the argument around, you know, growing the pie and making sure everyone was made whole, and that we at our county, I don't think any of us would be opposed to ensuring that smaller counties have an ability to get additional dollars, but it shouldn't be at our cost. It shouldn't be at the detriment of a county that just happens to be larger geographically. We didn't decide how big our county was going to be drawn when the state was created and when we were created in 1856, so, you know, why should we get punished for that? So it was, it's good to be a part of these discussions. You know, the common saying is, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. I think that was really inherent, and then the NACO staff, you know, quickly, you know, corrected, "Oh, yeah, that's right, you know, that's what we're advocating." I'm like, "Well, you've been silent for the last 15 minutes, but neither here nor there." So it was productive, and everyone kind of shifted the focus after I piped in. So it's just, just to be aware, we're advocating, and whether it's NACO or RCRC or CSAC or any of the other regional boards that we serve on, SJVIA, they all, we're all got the county's focus in mind when we go with that, so.
Also, next Monday night, the 11th, I will be part of a panel for the 210 Connect in Viselia on homelessness. And just one other thing I wanna mention, mentioned about the Slav Lunch. All the supervisors were invited to that down in Delano, except myself, because they don't allow women at that luncheon, so I just wanna put that out there.
You know, they, they're-
2019, folks.
You guys could've resolved that by bringing her some lamb.
No, I probably make better lamb than they make, so, being Armenian.
Have to talk to Pete, it's in his district.
Very good. And now we'll move on to item two, present proclamation recognizing the month of February 2019 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Tulare County. I believe we have our foreman, Mr. Ron White. No jokes, if you wanna come up, we'll come up and give a nice little presentation. Anybody else there? Judge?
Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Judge Mathias is also here, and he will be providing legal advice to the grand jury.
They need it now for proclamation? Come on, Al, you put a tie on for this. Get up here.
Plenty of room back there.
Yeah, we've crowded back here before. Different things, yes.
How are you?
That's why I'm up here.
I've got a few words as far as the proclamation. This has become a regular event, and we always appreciate the grand jury being present. And, you know, even with some of the less exciting meetings, we know that there's always gonna be a grand jury presence here, so at least we've got a little bit of an audience. So it's nice. And this proclamation is recognizing the month of February 2019 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Tulare County, whereas every year, in each California's 58 counties, 19 ordinary citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve a term of one year as grand jurors. And where grand juries have been in existence since the adoption of California's original Constitution, 1849, 1850, and whereas grand juries conduct their investigations under the auspices of the Superior Court of California and have broad access to public officials, employees, records and information, one of the most important functions of the grand jury is to review the operations of the officers, departments and agencies of local government. And whereas the primary duties of the Tulare County Civil Grand Jury are to investigate and report on local government operations to assure that the responsibilities are being fulfilled efficiently, honestly, and in the best interest of the public. And whereas the grand jury's fact-finding efforts result in reports that contain specific recommendations aimed at identifying problems and offering ways to improve government operations and enhance responsiveness. And whereas the reward of being a grand juror is the satisfaction received from working with fellow residents and community members to improve local government for all. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the efforts to those jurors, both past and present, who have volunteered their time and service to the Tulare County Civil Grand Jury. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors take great pleasure in recognizing the month of February 2019 as Grand Jury Awareness Month in Tulare County. February 5th, 2019, signed Kyler Crocker, Chairman, Pete Vanderpoel, Vice Chairman, Amy Shucklin, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah. Eddie, your word?
I'd like to also introduce our judge for this year, Judge Mathias. He's came on first of the year, and we've met with him and the entire jury. We're gonna do a fine job. I also would like to recognize Ellen Kennedy, Superior Court, and Annette Jones. She's our clerk, and without those two ladies, we wouldn't have a grand jury. So thank you very much.
Okay, ladies, I'm gonna pull you forward.
Very good. We have another great item. This is our third item, and that's to acknowledge those Tulare County restaurants and retail food establishments who have attained the Certificate of Excellence in Food Safety Award during the 2018 calendar year. I think maybe before we begin the formal presentation, if there's anyone here that is here for this recognition, if you'd just please stand, we recognize you right now. That'd be fantastic.
This always helps us decide where we're having lunch after this.
Very good. Take it over, Nelsa.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Crocker. My name is Nelsa Gonzalez. I'm with Tulare County Environmental Health. Environmental Health sits in the Public Health Branch of HHSA, and I'm glad to be here this morning to talk about our Excellence in Food Safety Award program. I also have Sonia Carranza with me in the audience, who is the supervisor for that retail food inspection program. So the program started in March of 2010 with really this idea of wanting to promote food safety and acknowledge all of the wonderful work that businesses were already doing out there. And so over the years, you could see that we've had more and more recipients. This year, though, in particular, 2018, has been outstanding. We are acknowledging 453 recipients, and so that is amazing. That really shows all the wonderful work that our businesses have been doing and really putting food safety at the forefront of their operations. So the goal is to recognize those food establishments which have consistently maintained exceptionally high sanitary, operational and structural standards, assuring the maximum protection of the public's health and safety. We also recognize them with a beautifully designed certificate for their establishment that has their name and address, and I'll show that to you in the presentation. We also list all of our recipients on our HHSA website, as well as our Environmental Health website, and so we'll get to see that shortly. We also encourage them to display their certificate at their facility to show their proven dedication and commitment to serving safe food to our community. So that's what this year, 2018, certificate looks like. It was designed by Allison Pierce, who is in our Public Health Branch. I think she did a really nice job with it. So these actually go out to all of the facilities in a nice folder here that they could then put up in their establishment. So what is some of the criteria in order to gain this award? First, you have to be a permanent food facility within the county. You have to conduct food preparation and handling, so it's all of our food prep facilities, such as sandwich shops, school serving sites, bars, mini-marts, restaurants, coffee shops, full-service restaurants. You have to be in good standing with Environmental Health Division, no outstanding enforcement actions on your establishment. And you also had to have achieved a score of 95% or above on the last three consecutive routine inspections with the current owner from the Environmental Health Division. And so that actually is really impressive, because those inspections, out of 100%, three consecutive could be anywhere between one to three years' worth of inspections for these folks. So we do have some main goals for the program. We'd like to focus and encourage the efforts of food operators on food safety by providing them with a Certificate of Excellence Award. We wanna lower the incidence of possible foodborne illness outbreaks by encouraging and educating and motivating the food safety culture. And we also wanna recognize and reward the hard work and effort done on a daily basis by the men and women of these food facilities that are doing an excellent job. So as I go through these quickly, I'm not gonna list every establishment out, because I do want, at the end, I want folks to be able to come up and say what business they're from so that we could recognize them then. But I am gonna just go through, I wanted to make sure that we had the full list available. So for the city of Dinuba, we had 12 food facilities. In Cutler, Arosi, Goshen, Ivanhoe, Sultana and Traver, we had six food facilities. The city of Wood Lake had six. The city of Viselia has 175 food facilities. As I go through these. There are a lot of schools that receive this as well, so that's very impressive. We had 69 facilities within the city of Tulare. As you could see, lots of chain restaurants, but also a lot of mom-and-pop facilities. The cities of Pixley, Tipton, Woodville had seven food facilities. Allensworth, Al-Paw, Early Martin, Delano had eight. Three Rivers had five. The city of Exeter has 14. City of Farmersville, 10. City of Lindsay, 10. Plainview and Poplar, 5. Strathmore has 11. Springville and Camp Nelson had 6. City of Porterville has 101 food facilities. And it's a mixture of chain restaurants along with locally-owned- And it's a mixture of chain restaurants along with locally-owned mom-and-pop restaurants. California Hot Springs, Terabella, Rich Grove, Ducor, eight food facilities. Now, one thing that we did do this year that we wanted to highlight was we wanted to see how many of these businesses had 100% in every inspection, which is amazing work. And so as we started to go through that data, we were able to identify 42 different schools in our county that have received 100% inspection scores on every single inspection the last three times. So as you can see, they're pretty spread out. Now, food facilities, we actually had 18 businesses in the county that had 100% every single time. That to me is amazing. That shows excellent leadership, you know, great manager, great staff, really focusing on those preventative measures with food safety and foodborne illness outbreak. So I'd like to, at this point, have the folks that are here come up and be recognized. I'd really like you to come up and state the name of your business and your name because I think that what you've done is amazing. It's really hard to do. You really are the leaders in this industry.
And I'd just add where you're located as well.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Come on up, don't be shy. So your name, if you want to say your name, your business.
And where you're located.
My name is Jorge Velasco, and I'm from Terabella Union Elementary School District.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Amanda, and the business name is Hergesheimer's Donut Factory, located at 963 West Henderson Avenue in Porterville, California 93257.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Delf. I am with McDonald's, and we're representing Tulare County and also some stores in Bakersfield.
Nice, thank you.
My name's Mona Lopez. I'm from the Visalia Red Robin.
Bryce Hare, The Country Cafe, 1718 East Merrill King.
Demary Valero, Three Rivers. That's it.
I'm Mary Gilbert from California Hot Springs, and my associate is Kelly Grove.
Thank you for driving.
My name is Matt Dogg- oh.
Yeah, thank you for driving all the way up here.
Matt Doggett with Sequoia Brewing Company.
Kelly Martin, Dinuba Unified.
Graham Morgan, Save Mart, 83 on 5203 West Walnut.
Merla Taylor, representing Pity's Barbecue, Tulare, at the airplane on L Street.
Curtis Capps, Save Mart, Exeter, California.
Jeff Wester, Save Mart, Demery and Noble, here in Visalia.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today.
Nilsa, next year, can you have everybody bring samples of their food?
Of the food?
That would be nice.
I saw Fred from Cafe Lafayette in Exeter, but I didn't see him come up, so I'm just going to call him out as well, because I know he's in the audience.
He's hiding in the back, huh?
Go ahead, Supervisor. Mr. Chair, just want to make a comment. You know, this is a program that the board really worked hard on early on in my career in 2010, and it's amazing to see how this has grown. You know, other counties have different systems of recognizing the various food establishments in their jurisdiction, and this is a unique system to Tulare County, and I like the way that we do it here in the county. I've ridden along with environmental health inspectors in the past and have gone through these inspections in restaurants. It is very thorough. It is difficult to attain 95%. I will attest to that, and I really do think that all of these establishments are to be commended. 453 is an incredibly long list to read through, so I'm glad that you didn't do that. But I don't want to take anything away from the recognition that these establishments do deserve, because the work that they do is tremendous, and I know my stomach appreciates it, and I'm sure my colleagues do and the general public as well, because the effort that you put in ultimately helps your customers and consumers, and that's who we are all here caring about, and that's why environmental health exists. So, great job, Nilsa and your staff, for operating this program and doing a wonderful job with it, and thank you again to all of the establishments who put so much into making this be a reality for them.
And I just want to echo that. Every day I think we hear in the news nowadays about food safety and whatnot, and recalls and everything else, and to know that we have restaurants here in Tulare County that take things very seriously and provide good food safety for the residents is very important. So thank you all.
And I'd also like to thank the recipients this morning for putting your customers at the forefront, and also for providing a food experience that accounts for safety, quality, and perfection. Again, thank you for your commitment and your consistent work, and for providing utmost service in the food industry in Tulare County.
Okay. You don't have to.
I really want to, since I frequent a lot of these establishments. No, congratulations to everyone, but I did just want to add a note that I always knew that Amanda from Hergesheimer's, I always knew that the old-fashioned with chocolate frosting was the best thing for your health, and now that's been confirmed right here.
Getting hungry here. Thank you all. It's always a great day when we get to recognize our restaurants. We will move on to public comments. If any member of the public has anything they'd like to bring up before the board that's within our jurisdiction but not on the agenda, now's the time to come up to either microphone. Seeing none, we will take up our consent calendar. Item 6 needs to have a correction, where we are ceasing the Assembly Public Safety Committee as that bill will be heard there first. And then we have a couple of comments, or a comment on item 15 for clarification.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just want to clarify, item 15, in the request, number three, that the date should reflect February 5th, 2019 through February 3rd, 2020.
Any other items that wishing for public extra comment or to be pulled?
14, just for a comment.
You'd like it pulled, or you'd like to comment?
I could comment.
Either one.
I'm pulling it. I just, you know, I just want to commend the staff at the Animal Control, Animal Services for seeking grants like this. It's very important. Spaying and neutering is a big deal here, especially in Tulare County, so thank you for going and getting this grant, so we can spay and neuter more animals. That's it.
Any other items wishing to be pulled or separate comment from the board, members of the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move approval?
I second.
Moved by Supervisor Shucklin, seconded by Supervisor Valero. Cast your votes, and the motion passes unanimously. Now we will go to item 5, our public hearing. Now I'll take up, there's a continued public hearing on fire hazard abatement cost recovery. The public hearing is now open. I remind everyone who testified last week that if you wish to testify again, that you're still under oath. Is there anyone who wants to testify today on this matter who wasn't sworn in last week? If so, please step forward, and the board clerk will swear you in. All right, seeing none, at this time I'll ask the Fire Department and its legal counsel to come forward for a presentation on the matter.
Morning.
Chairman and members of the board. Let me see. Okay, are there any property owners here that were here last night? I have some materials for you. Mr. Matos here. Your evidence. Before presenting the additional information requested by the board and the property owners in this matter, I'd like to correct a citation error made last week and state for the record that the correct Government Code section that empowers the county to enter into a contract for services necessary such as here is Government Code Section 23004. As we discussed last week, the Tulare County Fire Department contracts the services of Stephen Richard Incorporated for the abatement of nuisances deemed to be a fire hazard. In response to the board and the property owners' inquiries, Stephen Richard has provided a declaration detailing the work conducted on the specific properties at issue. That declaration and the sporting exhibits have been provided in full to the board, as well as property owners that are here today. I will go through some of the relevant sections and highlight those contained in that material in these slides. Under penalty of perjury, Stephen Richard, who we contract for these services, states that he has been contracted, currently holds the contract for the county of Tulare, providing the abatement services, and his contracted rate is $410 per hour per employee. He states that that agreed-upon hourly contracted rate is customary and reasonable for the specialized services that he provides in the removal and disposal of hazardous materials. Mr. Richard informed me that this job, the type of job that this entails, requires a minimum of two employees respond for any job site due to the heavy equipment and hazardous Taking each property in turn, we'll start with the property owned by Mr. Matos. Again, that's APN 1031051. According to Mr. Richard, this is the work order he was provided detailing the work ordered by Tulare County Fire. He states that that work for the Matos property was billed on invoice 1103, and that three employees completed a total of two days' work but had to respond to the site for three days. I think this clears up some confusion from last week. According to Mr. Richard, the three employees first responded on Monday, August, I apologize, on August the 2nd, which was a Thursday. They returned on Friday and completed a full day's work. When they returned on Monday following the weekend, they discovered that the homeowner had completed the abatement, and they proceeded to pack up their things and go home. That's where he accounts for the three days of travel and the hours worked. He states under penalty of perjury that that invoice reflects the actual hours worked and/or traveled. Here at Exhibit C are photos of the Matos property prior to abatement. And at Exhibit D, he provides to us photos after the abatement that he states reflect the actual work performed and billed pursuant to invoice 1103. Prior to moving to the next property, I'd like to address a few specific concerns raised by Mr. Matos when we met last week. Specifically, the question raised as to whether or not the notice of violation was received by Mr. Matos. It's Government Code Section 25845A that permits the Board of Supervisors to establish by ordinance a procedure for the abatement of a nuisance. That can be found at Chapter 11 of the Tulare County Ordinance Code. Section 4-11135 requires that a notice of violation be either personally delivered or mailed by regular mail to the owner as his address appears on the last equalized assessment roll. Mr. Matos stated to the board last week that while he had received the county's notices in years past, as well as the demand for payment of abatement costs for which he is here to contest, that he did not receive the notice of violation this year. He also stated that the county's notices in years past have served as a reminder to him to go and abate the fire hazard on his property, and had he received that notice this year, he would have done the same. All prior notices, including the notice at issue and the demand for payment of costs, were mailed in the same manner and to the same address. It is Mr. Matos as the property owner that has the duty to prevent the weeds, the grass, the overgrowth, and combustible rubbish from growing or accumulating upon his property. Despite his claim that he did not receive notice of the violation, Tulare County Fire complied with all of the Tulare County Ordinance requirements, and Mr. Matos should have been aware of the need to abate the hazard on the same property as in years past. Ultimately, it is his duty to prevent that hazard from occurring on his property. Moving on to, oh, I apologize, I don't even know if I know how to go back. Not very technical savvy. Okay, moving on to the JCH Family Limited Partnership property that is located APN Mr. Richard attests that this is a copy of the work he was requested by Tulare County Fire to complete, and that invoice 1138 represents the actual number of hours traveled and/or worked for the employees to complete this job. The job took him three days to complete with two employees, encompasses three trips to Goshen, and three trips to the dump. Exhibit G contains photos of the property prior to abatement. And Exhibit H represents the property reflecting the work after abatement. And the last property that we'll be going through this morning is the McWilliams property. That is APN 126062017. Again, a copy of the work attested by Mr. Richard requested at the request of Tulare County Fire, and the invoice reflecting the work performed at invoice 1126. Here he had two employees respond on September 4th and 5th to complete the requested abatement. And this invoice accurately reflects the work performed by both employees for a two-day period. At Exhibit K, we have photos of the McWilliams property prior to abatement. At Exhibit L, photos of the completed work that is billed for an invoice 1126. It's important to note that the three properties at issue were all in violation of the same ordinance code the previous year as well. Those properties have not changed ownership during that time. Each of these property owners knew they had a duty to prevent these types of hazards from reoccurring annually. The Fire Department's violation and abatement procedures are not designed to serve as an annual reminder of that duty. Scope of this hearing is very narrow. Is the contracted rate of $110 per hour unreasonable for these type of specialized services? The property owner bears that burden of showing that that rate is unreasonable. That burden cannot be met by challenging the scope of the work completed. Tulare County Fire decides the scope of the work necessary to bring the property into code. The work completed by the contractor did not exceed the scope of the work requested. That burden cannot be met either by merely claiming they could have done the job faster or for less money. They had that option, they chose not to exercise that option. The burden can only be met by showing that the rate of $110 per hour is an unreasonably high rate in comparison to the rates of other companies providing this same service. Absent that, the county is entitled to recover these costs pursuant to Government Code Section 25845B, which states, "In any action to abate a nuisance, whether by administrative proceedings, judicial proceedings, or summary abatement, the owner of the parcel upon which the nuisance is found to exist shall be liable for all costs of abatement incurred by the county, including but not limited to administrative costs and any and all costs incurred in the physical abatement of the nuisance." Therefore, at this time, we again request the board place the cost- Therefore, at this time, we again request the board place the cost incurred by the county to abate these nuisances on the tax roll as special assessments against the respective parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions for staff at this time?
I have one question. Are property owners able to request extensions?
Yes, they are. Our hazard abatement officer, which you met last week, Cindy Adney, does allow them to request a little additional time if they have circumstances. Leads her to believe that they're going to abate the property, she will work with them on that.
Please state your name and your position for the record.
Pete Marquez, Division Chief, Tulare County Fire.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I mean, I have comments, but I'll just, I'll wait until after anyone makes comments from the public.
At this time, we'll take comments from parcel owners or other interested parties.
Good morning. I'm Mario Mattis. I don't question the hourly rate. I question the hours. She said that there was like two days of work. I had my guy go out there and do it in three hours. I don't know what kind of disc or mowing they used, but one guy did it in three hours, and you claimed that there was three people there to do the job, and it took them two days, and they weren't done. Some of these photos say before August 3rd, it was not disced, and then on the 4th, it was, and you claimed that you started it on the 2nd, I want to say? I also think that the person that performed the job should be here also, because I don't understand how it took two days to do about two acres of work. I really, I'm a farmer as well. I don't understand. I mean, I could see, you know, a couple hours, like I said, my guy did it in three hours, and this guy took 24 hours of disking, eight hours of mowing, and eight hours of travel. Where did this guy come from, LA? I mean, this is a joke. This is crazy. I don't know what else to tell you. I guess comparison would be like if I sent you guys a bill for $2,000 to be here, because I have a business to run, and I can't do it from here.
My only comment would be to the time taken to do the job. Oh, Bruce Evans from McWilliams. Again, it's just the time, two days on a lot, it seems excessive to me. Thank you.
Any members of the public now have the opportunity to speak? None? Does staff have any additional comments or recommendations to make at this time?
I just want to remind the board that the details of the invoices are stated in the declaration and broken apart by employee. The invoice isn't trying to reflect that they spent 24 consecutive hours on the property. For the Mattos property, there were three employees that were, he can bill a hundred and ten dollars per hour for each employee that's on the project. They worked half a day the first day, a full day the second day, and then when they returned Monday, they did not charge for any work performed, because the work was then completed by the property owner. But they are still permitted to charge for the travel and mobilization of going and loading the heavy equipment, responding to the property, leaving the property, and then returning the heavy equipment to where it came from. And the same is true for the invoice on the remaining properties. That's how the billing is broken down, and that is customary for that field.
Charlie Norman, Fire Chief, 835 South Acres, West Side, California, 93277. Indiscriminate, every year, we have one of these large-scale incidents, whether it's the pier fire or the rough fire. Granted, we've got a different urban interface issues versus what we have in the ag lands, but our bottom line is we want to keep people safe, life, environment, property. And land use issues and abatement issues are always very challenging, telling someone what they can do with their own private property, but our goal is to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Any parcel owners wish to make any rebuttal for the comments?
Just going back to what I said earlier.
Mario, could you state your name for the record again?
Mario Mattis. I just want to go back to how I said that my man did this in three hours, and how we put in 24 hours, regardless of a half a day or a full day, it was a total of 24 hours of work. Now, they say they brought in heavy equipment. By looking at one of those photos, it looked like a little six-foot disc with a really small tractor and a mower. I can't imagine the size of the mower to take that long to mow. Also, you know, when we go out there and do the job, we go out there and we bring in equipment, we get it done, but is there a specific date that it has to be disced out there? Is there a certain day that it has to be disced under? Is my question, because I don't know that date. You know, I always get the letter, and then we'd go out and do it, but this time, we don't get a letter, we get a bill. You know, I can't be the only one that once in a while gets a letter in the mail that doesn't even belong to you. I mean, it happens to me, I'm sure it happens to others. And if we don't put it back in the box, it don't get to the person. It happened to me last week. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Mattis. Mr. Mattis, just a quick question. You know, looking at these pictures and remembering the comment that you made last week, you know, we can't debate here today if the charges are, you know, we can't debate the hours worked, or if they mowed, if they didn't mow. You stated last week that it only appeared that the front of the property was mowed. Is that?
Yeah, very, very small portion of the front there.
Because, you know, to me, I want to just make the point that you're being charged for the 30 feet in perimeter all the way around the entire property. But what the comment you made was that it only looked like they did one-fourth of that, so one portion of the property.
Sure.
Fulfill that.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Because from the pictures, I can't really see an entire perimeter was done in this instance. That's just looking at the pictures.
Yeah, and that's what it is, just pictures. I mean, we need to have people following up to make sure the jobs are getting done as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other parcel owners wish to make any rebuttal? Seeing none, we will, do any board members have any questions?
Or comments?
Or comments?
Okay. So I have thought about this for a very long time, and so this is what I have to share. For one, I want to stress the vitality of our communities by focusing on physical improvements and providing well-maintained and safer lands that are free from potential fires and/or other hazards. We need to make sure that we assess our properties and make improvements as needed on a continuous basis. I do believe that the county provided due diligence in providing notice and information, and it is my hope that the county has chosen the least costly method of abatement, considering the physical characteristics of said properties and environmental concerns. I do respect and honor the individuals who came forward last week and those that are here today, and I thank you. I too want to honor our county colleagues who have done the work on this matter and who have shared documentation for further decision-making. To rectify this situation in the future, I urge my colleagues to move forward with the Fire Department's recommendation, yet with the understanding that we will work on a revised abatement program that includes more notice, utilize the U.S. Postal Service Delivery Confirmation Service, and provide a greater competitive bid process in the future. And that is it. Chair, chairman.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I guess my only comment is, you know, we say it's a hundred and ten dollars an hour, but it's really 220 an hour, because he's saying he's always sending out two people. I think it is the responsibility of the property owners without a notice. I do have, yes, I do have a question. Mr. Mattis asked if there was a particular date that things had to be done by every season Chief is there? Or Pete?
Marquez, Division Chief, Tulare County Fire. That date depends on the weather. So as, if it was to start drying the fuels out there, the grass, then the process would start sooner than later. So if we have a wetter season and those fuels aren't drying, then we'll start a little bit later, because we don't want to start that process until they're starting to dry and starting to become a hazard, and then that timeline for them to be abated is dependent on the time that that letter was sent out, and that they have the 15 days from the time the letter was sent out. So some are going to have different deadlines based on when the people in the station identify those properties that need to be abated.
Okay, so it's not like June 1st every year, you've got to have it done, or May 15th, so the letters go out. It could be later, it could be sooner.
Correct, yeah. If we could send, if we could identify all those properties on one date, then we could have a timeframe like that, but because they're identified at different intervals, that's why there's not one date.
I was, thank you, thank you. Because what I was going to say is, like in the case of Mr. Mattis, you know, every year, you've got to do it, but I am seeing now that you don't really know what that date is, so you may have planned to go out, and if you did not get the letter, so.
But we did get to it.
Yeah.
And we would have been there earlier, but my guy was, you know, he's a farmer as well.
If you could, if you want to speak, please come to the microphone. Thank you.
You know, like I said, I was there in the middle of July, and we could have got to it earlier, but he was busy. You know, it's not like he's going to drop his farming job to go disc 20 acres, and he says, hey, I'm going to get to it. And we did. And if I know a specific date, we'll get it. I don't need a letter if that's the case. Just tell me the date, I have to have it done.
Right.
You know, I have oats growing right now, we planted oats out there, and so it's going to get dry before we probably bale, you know? And we had oats two years ago, and last year's weeds were partially voluntary oats that were growing. If they were a little taller, I was going to bale and make wheat straw.
Thank you. That's all.
Yeah, you know, just a comment that, you know, I, to me, you know, like I said, there are things that we can't really argue with in this instance. I just, I think that the bill that was placed on, you know, I'm not going to obviously argue the department fee that it took for the cost incurred within the department, but to place a fee of $4,400 on a property owner when it's questionable whether or not the entire work was done, you know, around the entire property, I don't know, and I just, I have a real hard time with that. I understand what the Fire Department's doing, I support what the Fire Department is doing in keeping our communities safe. I just have a really hard time in this instance with the little bit of inconsistencies that exist, and I agree with Supervisor Valero, we need to change the notification process. We can't really do it for the 2,000-plus property owners that you're notifying each year, but for those that are, I guess, the most egregious cases or that have not shown response, a delivery confirmation type of a service or some different approach is going to be needed, and that will come with a cost, but it's certainly a much smaller cost than the entire 2,000 parcel initial group that you're sending out to. So, you know, I think that the charge here is excessive in the case of the Mattis property, based upon looking at it and seeing the property. I'm not going to debate what's flammable, what's not flammable, you're the fire professionals, not me, but the fact that there was a year prior, it was oats, and then this year, currently it's oats. I know that there are seeds that will grow with the water that's applied to them in a year that they're not even planted necessarily for a specific crop, and I just don't see, from looking at the photos, the visual evidence we have in front of us, that the entire work was performed. So I'm not in favor of assessing the entire fee that's charged to this particular property owner. I mean, in the other instances of all other properties, you can see by the photos that the entire work was done, and the entire parcel was abated and cleaned. I just don't see that in this case.
Any other comments, questions? I'll take a stab at it. I think the council made a comment regarding that this isn't about abatement, and I don't, or that, no one's really arguing the abatement charges, and I think that's important to know. I don't know that any of the board members have stated that last week or this week, or even the property owners themselves have argued the point that whether or not abatement should occur. So today and last week, what's before us is confirming the accounting and confirming the costs, and as I read it, in layman's terms, and not necessarily in legal terms, that that includes not only the rate, but also the hours performed, and so that's all included as far as what the costs are concerned. And, you know, there's valid invoices as far as, you know, what was actually billed to the property owners versus what was submitted. I don't know that there's necessarily discrepancies from that standpoint, but just, again, just looking at from a logical standpoint, I know what it takes to disc property for myself having someone disc my property last week. So, you know, I know what that is versus what is being charged, and whether or not that's reasonable, and whether or not we can confirm that, I think there's a systematic issue. So I'm very supportive of changing the process moving forward. I would, I was hoping that staff would have some type of recommendation based on some of the comments that were made last week to have some type of modification. I understand that the contractor still needs to be paid, and probably has already been paid, and so there's, that means that the general fund will probably have to eat some of those dollars, but I think that there's systematic issues here that we need to fix for this go-around, and then make corrections in the process moving forward so that we don't have to go through this process year in and year out, and this, recognizing that there's still going to be individuals that are going to be upset for a myriad of reasons if it gets to that abatement process, but if we do things to improve the notification process, if we put different places or different checks in place so that we are monitoring contractors with a little more scrutiny, then I think that these things are all avoidable.
And one other additional comment that I'll make, and I think that council made the comment as well, but I think it's important to note that this contracted rate is actually between the contractor and the county, not the contractor and a private property owner. So when the contract is with the county, there are additional requirements, the bonding, the insurance, that is very expensive, but, you know, again, there's just, there's some real discrepancies and issues here, and I just, I can't, I can't in good conscience move forward with the recommended rate. So I don't know if council has any additional comments or recommendations.
Have this agendized for a closed session?
Do you? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to be clear that the Mattos invoice in the declaration, he is not suggesting that he completed the entire work assignment. He is billing for, according to his declaration, actual hours of work performed on the site for the half-day Thursday and the full-day Friday. They did not finish the job Monday, because the homeowner finished it Monday, so they were not billed for any work on Monday. The fact that there was only three hours of work left on Monday only speaks to the fact that there was substantial work done on Thursday and Friday, and those hours are billed in actual time. I don't know how we can discern, based on photos and invoices and the same declaration, the same attest from the person who provided these services, which properties we're going to believe them on and which properties were not. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I also just share something?
Let me take a bite first. I, I, so I recognize that, that there's going to be an issue with oversight. But I think it is important to, to also recognize that there, as far as with contractors, that we need to have a little more oversight as far as what they're billing. I think it's important that the, that the public understands that it's not going to be fine tuned and that we're, it's going to be accurate to the second or to the minute or possibly even the hour. But it should be and we need to have a little more scrutiny on these things. Because it, there are large discrepancies. I think from, from my own personal experience with a similar type of, with, with disking. I mean, we're talking about disking. Like I said, I've, I had, I had Brett McCallan out disking last week.
And I just had three acres disced last week as well. And I paid for that as well and I know what that charge is.
Right. So it's, there's, there's definitely discrepancies as far as I think the, just using the logical test as far as that there's, it isn't quite adding up. And I think it's this board's responsibility to make sure that we are protecting the safety of our constituents and making sure that we're still moving forward with fire abatements. But that we're also protecting taxpayers as well and making sure that when costs occur, that it's a reasonable cost. And I think that's really what the, what the issue is today. What is, what is a reasonable amount? And, yeah.
But can I just share? So one thing that did concern me with one of my colleagues just mentioned. Again, we can't pick and choose on what to scrutinize moving forward. Either it's all across the board or it's nothing. And so that's what, what kind of concerns me is that we're picking at certain items on this, on this agenda item. And I really want us to just be very focused on it's either we move forward with the, the accounts that are, need to be paid or we're going to do, how would I say? Or we're going to just, again, across the board or nothing. And so again, I just don't like the fact that we're scrutinizing one property versus another.
And, and I'll just make the point that, you know, I just think that you, you know, not all properties are the same. And so, so we, we have to look at, the photos even speak for themselves. Some of them are lots in a, in a community that are, you know, acre or, you know, half an acre. And then some are large agricultural lots. You, you have to look at things, you know, a little bit differently. And to Supervisor Crocker's point, you know, certainly we, we are out here protecting the general public safety. That is the goal of the county and the goal of the fire department in this whole process. But at the same time, we are elected by the general population within this county. They are taxpayers, they are residents. We are trying to keep them safe, but we are also their advocate as well. That's why there's an elective process and this isn't just, and this isn't just the fire department out there.
No, I agree. And I, I know that.
This is on closed session. I know council brought that up. Is there, is the pleasure of the board to seek any legal guidance from the council? If not, um...
I mean, I, I, you know, my, my question is definitely of, of legal concern as to what, I mean, in, in the point of, you know, treating properties differently, treating properties, all the properties the same. I'd like to have that addressed.
Seeing that, we will adjourn into closed session. Or not adjourn into closed session, we will go into closed session. We're still, the meeting's still going to take place. We'll go into closed session for item A. Back in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the consultation of council. And I, and for the first time in my ten years of being on the Board of Supervisors, I would like to see this item continued again. So this is the first time that I've seen this happen twice. But what I'm going to say in, in my motion to continue this item is that I would like to direct staff to come back to this board with actual abatement charges that are calculated based upon what exists in the actual contract for services between the county, fire department, and the private contractor that performed the work. Based upon that, I'd like you to come back with corrected abatement charges and present that to the board.
That's the motion to continue to the next, the next Board of Supervisors meeting. Supervisor Shuckland, any further comments, public comments? Seeing none, vote. Come back at our next board meeting, February twenty-sixth, nine-thirty a.m. again.
And I, and I do want to thank staff. This was, this detail was very helpful to come to the continuance motion. So just want to say that.
Thank you. And we are anticipating finalization at that point. Yeah, if, if you have a comment, yeah, but the motion is finished, yeah. So we are continuing it. We did vote on it, it was unanimous, five oh to continue. Very good. Thank you. Now we'll move to our untimed item eighteen. Request from Sheriff's Department to approve personnel resolution to increase the position allocation by adding one FTE inmate program specialist effective February seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Authorize necessary budget adjustments. Four-fifths vote requirement. Assistant Sheriff Douglas.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. CIO, Ms. Council. Keith Douglas, Assistant Sheriff for Sheriff Mike Boudreaux, the Sheriff's Office. With me today, I have our program manager Suzanne Reyes. In case you, we have any questions that I'm unable to answer. We're here presenting today asking for the approval of an additional allocated position of an inmate program specialist. Last year, we partnered with the WID to, in the LEAP program, which is a program that allowed us to bring job preparation skills into the facility for people who were getting ready to be released from incarceration and prep them for work skill environment, customer service skills, filling out resumes, job applications, how to take interviews. Unfortunately, that program ended at the end of eighteen. And now we have what we call the PEC, which is the Pathway to Employment Connection. It's a very similar grant that we're doing, that we are joining up again. And this would allow a full-time inmate program specialist to work in the facility, but also work in partnership with a, a a member from WID, a counselor that will assist in that as well. There is no net county cost to this. The sheriff has indicated that we're going to utilize AB one oh nine funds out of our baseline funds. So we're not going to be anticipating any unanticipated expenditures out of this and what. It's a very successful program. And as you can see, for the fiscal year of eighteen nineteen, which we're finishing, would be twenty-one thousand and change, and for fiscal year nineteen twenty, sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And I'm open to any questions you might have.
Questions from the board, comments?
I'd like to just comment and say that I commend the Sheriff's Department for implementing this position in our jails. This is a position that I think will prepare offenders for their return to community while reducing recidivism rates across our county. It is my hope that these inmates will develop life and work skills that will keep them from returning. Ultimately, it's their choice to participate. But by providing this option, the Sheriff's Department is doing its part to make our community safer with the resources at hand. So again, I appreciate your forward thinking on this matter and I support this agenda item.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, comment? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll, well, yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion then Supervisor Townsend. But I just appreciate the sheriff always thinking outside the box and finding new ways to hopefully better equip those who have been incarcerated at some point for a reintegration into the community.
I have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Any further comments, questions? Not, please vote. Motion's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to item nineteen. Request from the Resource Management Agency to approve an increase in the fiscal year two thousand nineteen Cross Valley Canal budget to account for an increase in Central Valley Project water deliveries. Mr. Reed?
Yes, good morning, Reed Chanky with the Resource Management Agency. Today with this item, as I bring up the PowerPoint here. With this item, staff is requesting your authorization to modify our budget to allow for increased water deliveries to our CVC contractors. In typical years, our fiscal practice has been to budget for base admin costs. And then as the allocation is announced, to revise the budget to allow for which, for the actual amount of water that will be delivered. Also thought this would be a good opportunity to go over some background and provide a little bit of history for some of our new supervisors who may not be familiar with the Cross Valley Canal. Unfortunately, my two experts both have jury duty today, so step with me and I'll hopefully be able to answer questions for you, or if not, we'll be able to get back to you. As background on the Cross Valley Canal, the CVC is a water conveyance facility in southern San Miquin Valley. It runs from the California Aqueduct to the Kern River at the extreme southern end of the Fryant-Kern Canal. It's an open channel, basically looks like the Fryant. Provides seven contractors and managed through water supply contracts of Central Valley Project water. So this is, these are contractors that are physically located along the Fryant-Kern Canal and not adjacent to or directly receiving water flowing out of the Cross Valley Canal. Department of Water Resources provides the pumping facilities and the Bureau of Reclamation provides the power supply. So there's a lot of various parties that are interconnected in this facility. There's the location of the canal down there in Kern County, between the California Aqueduct and again, at the southern tip of the Fryant-Kern Canal. These are the seven CVC-fed contractors. Some of them shown here in Tulare County. So it's Tulare County, Fresno County, Lower Tule ID in green there, Pixley ID below it, Hills Valley ID, Tri Valley ID, and Kern-Tulare Water District. In blue are shown the subcontractors that the county of Tulare has subcontracted. We basically serve as a paths through organization or entity to those subcontractors or end water users. A couple of those are cities, some are irrigation districts, and then there are a couple of private entities as well. Here's the allocated distribution of the water, the CVP wa, the CVC water. Our county of Tulare allocation is five thousand, three hundred and eight acre feet. That's about four percent of the total CVC allocation. And you can see that we don't get our, we don't always get our actual contracted amount. So it's generally quite a bit less than the actual amount. In this time period, which was from ninety-eight to twenty fifteen, we averaged about fifteen hundred acre feet versus the five thousand, three hundred and eight total acre feet.
Just a point of clarification on that. This water allocation is state water project, which means that it's coming from Orville primarily, which means it's going through the Delta, which is why there's, it's not a consistent amount because of pumping issues. So when the pumps aren't pumping, then this affects the water contracts that we have for this.
There's physical constraints to when the water is available. If the canal is full, water uses, then we're limited in what we're allowed to actually receive. Each CVC contractor, which we are, is currently a party to its own separate three-party contract with the Bureau of Reclamation and DWR to receive the CVP water and then convey this water through the CVC. We're going through a series of what's called interim renewal contracts. So the initial long-term, or the initial contract was for twenty years, took place in seventy-five. And then, starting in nineteen ninety-six, we've gone through these biannual interim renewal contracts. So every two years, we come back to the board and we extend it again, basically another two years can we have this contract? So our current interim renewal contract is good through February of two thousand twenty. We are currently working with Bureau of Reclamation to transfer this into a long-term conveyance contract, which will basically solidify our position. And there are benefits, which I think get a little bit beyond my knowledge, but it's, allows more water trades when you have a long-term contract. It puts you in a stronger position. But the trade-off is that we have to basically pay for construction costs through our annual uses and to transfer into that long-term conveyance contract, there will be a, basically a down payment of what was mortgaged to build the facility. So we're working with the Bureau of Reclamation on that to, to make that transfer. But it's a fairly slow process. We started it back about this time last year and we're still working with the Bureau of Rec to actually go through that process. The Tulare County's actual subcontractors are listed here. You can see we've got a couple irrigation districts. Visalia, and then a few private entities as well that basically bought into this arrangement in seventy-five when it was initially conceived. Fresenado Farms LLC is actually a defunct facility now. They've gone out of business. And so the four hundred or so acre feet that was allocated to them is, is kind of back on the table to be redistributed as the county sees fit. So we're working through that process. We've gone through kind of the, the closeout with Fresenado to determine that they are no longer an entity in operation. And that's taken a little bit of time to kind of check those boxes.
Mr. Chair, quick, quick question on that. So since this four hundred acre feet is on the table, so to speak, how would you propose going forward to distribute this? Or is it a right that you would look at selling since in seventy-five, these contractors bought in? What, what is the proposal?
So that's, that's what we're looking through. And there's, there's reams of paper on regulations on this. Best we can tell is that it's really up to the county to determine how we want to do that, if we want to put it on an open market and have people bid for it.
Public process, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
But like I say, there's, there's really more than just the actual water, which is a benefit to being a party to this as a subcontractor. If you are a subcontractor, you're at the table and you're allowed to make other trades and exchanges for other water uses. So while you may not be getting a direct delivery of CVC water that year, it opens up the opportunities in a greater way to be party to that contract. In recent activity, these are the allocations for, since two thousand thirteen that we've received. And this gets to why we budget for basically the administrative costs versus the actual deliveries. You can see that in some years, the water, the water declaration, which is the kind of the theoretical max annual that we would allow, be allowed. And again, remember, our total maximum is fifty-three hundred acre feet. But every year, they identify a total water declaration year. So some years, that's that fifty-three hundred, other years, it can be as low as zero based as on drought and other issues. The percent total allocation is the amount of our total. So again, twenty seventeen, eighteen, we got a hundred percent of our allocation. But there are practical limitations. So depending on when that water is available, other canals may be full, there may not be pumping capacity. So you're not always going to get that allocation even if it is declared. So this year, twenty-six hundred fifty-four acre feet was declared. Of that, we were only able to, or our subcontractors were only able to be delivered nineteen hundred ninety-one acre feet. So what we're asking for today is the, adjust the budget. And based on the pumping costs, the maintenance cost by the maintenance operator, which in this case is another party, it's Arvin, Arvin Edison Irrigation District. The charge is about two hundred and fifty dollars per acre feet times the nineteen ninety-one. So that's where we get to the roughly half a million dollars that we're asking for budget allocation. And again, we're acting as a pass-through on this. So we bill our subcontractors. As soon as they pay the bill, then we pay Arvin Edison. So it's pretty much just a pass-through financially. We are able to take a small administration fee for our costs on top of that. And then, timing-wise, the water year is different from our federal fiscal year, different from the calendar year. It's March first through February twenty-eighth. And oftentimes, those final declarations occur late in the budget process or late in the year. So that's why we end up coming back to you here. So with that, I open, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But our request is to approve the increase in the fiscal year nineteen Cross Valley Canal budget to account for the increase in the Central Valley Project water deliveries and approve the attached odd three oh eight. If you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Other questions from the board? I asked this, this was originally on consent and I asked this to be pulled. One, because I think it's important for the two new members to, to hear about this. But last year, I also had this item pulled. And I requested at that point in time that we look at contracts that were for private entities and that we specifically look to utilize our, the water that we have for economic development purposes. We have small communities, there's restrictions around how this water can be used. They have to be able to get it delivered. So not every community has that opportunity to this water. But where it makes sense, where there's either water quality and quantity issues, if we can use this to increase...
where there's either water quality and quantity issues, if we can use this to increase our tax base, to improve our communities, I think that's a very prudent way to go about looking at the contract. So, but I want to add on to that, you know, with the, with the 10 subcontractors that we have, I think in evaluation of all those contracts, I know many of those are very long-term, and so figuring out, you know, where we are in each of those contracts, when the renewals will be up, if there's automatic renewals, et cetera, because I, I recognize that many of these partners that we've had partnerships with for decades, but it's a new, it's a new day, and we have different priorities where, you know, at that point in time, we, people weren't worried about nitrates and groundwater, and so communities didn't have to be concerned about whether they could drill a new well or not and growth rates. So I think that's important, and I'd like to see a follow-up agenda item within the next few months, just to provide an update and to see what, where we're going, and we can have a more formal discussion around that.
Certainly. We do plan on returning to your board when we get a little bit more clarification from the Bureau of Rec on the conversion to the long-term contract, so we can certainly include that in that discussion.
Very good. Any other comments from board, members of the public? Not, entertain a motion. Still moved? Moved by Supervisor Shuckland, seconded by Supervisor Valero. Cast your votes. And the motion is unanimous. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make any public comments regarding closed session? Not, we will adjourn into closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item A was already heard in closed session. There is no announcement out. We will hear items B through E, and I do not expect an announcement out.